So that's a good, that's a good sign. Okay, so this is the virtual meeting preamble for the broadband authority. Because of the continuation of the COVID-19 pandemic, this meeting is being held electronically over the Zoom platform. It is authorized by the county's continuity of government ordinance, this authority's resolution and Virginia statute. The public has real-time audio visual access to this meeting over Zoom and real-time audio access over telephone. Everyone on the phone and attending via Zoom from the public is in listen-only mode. The following instructions apply to those who wish to speak during public comment. If you are listening on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature to notify the meeting facilitator. For those joining by telephone, please use the star nine to indicate you would like to comment. Tell the board your full name and the magisterial district in which you reside before getting into the substance of your comment. If you don't know your magisterial district, provide a general location for your home or business. The street location or neighborhood name will suffice. Each speaker will be allowed no more than three minutes to comment. This meeting is being recorded and will be made available on the county's website. And with that explanation, I ask the board members to identify themselves and their general location. And I'll do a roll call. Let's see. So let's see. Bucky Walsh?
I'm Bucky Walsh. I'm in Middleborough, Massachusetts.
That was a twist I didn't see coming.
Let's see. Waldo Jake with?
I'm at my home at Stony Point.
Let's see. Trevor Henry?
At my residence in Almore County.
Bill Fritz?
I'm at my home in Charlottesville.
Supervisor Palmer?
He's having audio troubles. She says she is. This is Liz in the chat.
You're muted, Liz.
Yeah, she says her mic's not working.
Supervisor Price?
I am at Victory Hall in beautiful downtown Scottsville, Virginia.
All ready? So Mr. Chair, everyone's present and accounted for. We have a quorum.
Thank you very much, Mr. Delorean. Our first order of business is to approve the agenda. I trust everyone is in receipt of the current agenda. Are there any suggestions for changes? Liz, if you want to enter suggestions in the chat or just wave your hand to get our attention and then spell out things with signs? Hearing no suggestions for changes, let me move that this agenda be approved. All those in favor signify with an uplifted finger. We went two, three. It looks like unanimous approval of the agenda as it is presented. And that takes us to brief announcements by authority members. I have one this time, so I'll go. I'm pleased to report that the Board of Supervisors has appointed me for another four-year stint on the broadband authority. I'm hoping we don't need that long. So we'll see. Is there anyone else?
I guess I might as well declare that I made the cut as well. I'm pleased to report after a nail-biting voicemail from Supervisor Price. It turned out, turned out I made the cut. I share your hope that we will be useless in less time than that. That is, I love the goal of making ourselves unnecessary.
Any other announcements? No? All right. Let's move on to public comment. I think our public at the moment is limited to Derek. And Derek, you're certainly welcome to comment, but we're gonna have you talking too, so. Seeing no raised hands for a public comment, but checking the chat real quick. Nope, nope, nope. Seeing no raised hands, we'll move on to the approval of the April 26, 2021 and the May 26, 2021 meeting minutes. Have received these from Bill Fritz and provided some comments back to him. Has everyone else had a chance to see those? And Bill, perhaps I could ask you to comment whether there were any substantive changes to the minutes from what you had sent.
Bill seems to have dropped off.
Bill does not seem to be on the call.
I provided some insubstantial edits, but nothing to change the meeting of the notes in any way.
Yeah, I had some minor textual changes. Were there any other changes anyone suggested? No? Well, even absent Bill's presence, I would suggest that we move these to approval so we can get them out there. Is there any? Trevor, go ahead.
A motion to approve?
Thank you very much, sir. I'll second that motion. All those in favor, please signify in the appropriate visual fashion, one, two, three, four, five, six. It looks like, well, actually, one, two, three, four, five. All those currently on the meeting are in favor of approving the minutes. And we'll note that Bill was absent at this point in the meeting. And that'll take us on to old business into the body 2020 update. Mike, should we have Derek join in at this point?
Thank you, Chair. I will definitely do that. And I will note for the ABBA board that Citizen Mike Powell has joined past the public comment period, so I will move forward and just keep going with the body 2020. We've been doing a lot of customer service work to make sure the two or three projects that are still underway, and Derek will provide an update for us and give us some lessons learned and talk about future plans when we get to the body 2021. So the latest news is because of the ability of DHCD to appropriate funds across fiscal years, the money that was set aside for the 21 project or the 20 project, body 2020. The money will be re-appropriated into fiscal year 2122. And that way, we'll be able to do a draw once we're satisfied with the invoicing that CenturyLink provides us. So just to update the board on the process, the monies that the state provided come after the monies that the broadband authority has provided, and that's 291,300 each. Those monies are being held until we get the invoices and verify the invoices. And then, in this particular case, CenturyLink will be issuing at least one large invoice, and that will deplete all of the ABBA funds as well as require us to do a drawdown from body. So we're looking forward to getting all of that going. And with no other questions on that, I think I'll just pass the baton over to Mr. Derek Kelly while I promote Liz back as a panelist. So Derek, up on your thank you for all the emails that have been going back and forth. Just want to thank you for all the work that you've done to make this a reality, bringing fiber to the rural areas of Virginia. And got a lot of people that are happy and a lot of people who have made significant suggestions for how we can improve the process. So take it away, sir.
All right. Thanks, Mike. Thanks, everyone. Good to see you. And yeah, as I talk to each customer, having trading emails and voicemails and phone calls with them from rural North Carolina, where I definitely do not have access to fiber. Now I'm just getting into jealous mode. So I need to find a way to get a grant for my area. So excited that since last time we met, we've now officially launched all the different body projects. We're still doing a little bit of cleanup. We have one road on Watts Passage. It's a Pretty Creek Road where we just had major issues and I had some conversations with Mike and Bucky. If I had found out about this much earlier in the process, I probably would have tried finding a way for us to just delete that out of our grant. So basically, we had some real issues with terrain. There's no shoulder on the road. There's basically trees right near the road where we couldn't even place our plows on the side of the road. So we ended up having to use boring to bore in about 7,000 feet of fiber on that road, which, when you start boring, instead of plowing, your costs go up about three or four times as high. We thought we were making some progress. We had most of the conduit in. And then, just the other day, we were trying to bore one last creek that we had to go under. And we ended up trying it four different times with two different boring machines and couldn't get underneath it. So we're gonna go ahead and set some poles to go over top of the creek instead of under the creek. You know, I told Mike and Bucky that I probably would have pushed to remove that out of our project, but I'm glad our construction team is just pushing ahead. It's taken a little bit of time. And it's taken a lot more money than it should, but we're gonna get service to those folks. And it's about 20, I think there's 28 homes that are on that road. So we're hoping that we have that turned up. Our goal is by the end of next Friday. But when I set a goal for Mike, I put the week after that, so by July 9th, to get that last bit of area, the having to set some poles was a little bit of a wrench in there that we were not expecting. And then there's one other small section on Coles Rolling Road that is actually part of our Scottsville Road project. It's like seven to 10 homes at the top end of it where we ended up missing placing about 1,500 feet of fiber to get terminals closer to those homes. So we're going back and adding that. But outside of those two project areas, we're taking orders, installing customers. You know, I won't say that everything has gone as smoothly as we've liked. I think we continue to learn some lessons throughout the process. You know, we've spent a lot of time in the last couple of weeks, I was off last week, but before that and the last couple of days this week, just talking about how we're communicating with customers. So there was, and this is gonna bleed into 21 and 20, 20 and 2020 and 2021. The drop process has been a little bit painful, not the, not so much getting real escalations about, you know, charging for drops. We've only had a couple of customers just upset or are not happy with that process, but just the timing to get everything placed. And so for this current round, we used a reservation process where we basically set wedding invitation type envelopes to people so they wouldn't think it was just your typical spam and would hopefully read it and give them a chance to reserve a spot. And then, the intention of that is so then we could notify them as soon as service was ready and we could go ahead and place their order. We typically don't place drops until we actually get the order. So we typically, a reservation for us doesn't always translate into an order. We have, we have some people that reserved a spot and have not placed their order yet. Going into body 2021, our fiber to the home brand is going to be changing names. So I think everyone has started seeing Lumen on my email address now. So Lumen is our parent company in sort of our international global enterprise business. And then, we still are gonna operate under the CenturyLink brand for our copper areas. But we're gonna start introducing the Quantum Fiber brand for our fiber to the home projects. So this isn't just a branding, like we're trying to come up with some cool name. We're basically building a platform for customers, how their orders flow to us, to their billing, to everything. Instead of us having this system that was designed for phone service, that we then customized that DSL and then customize again to have fiber to the home. We basically built a platform that, from ordering to installation to service afterwards, is all built around servicing customers on fiber to the home. So as we go into the next set of projects, 45 days before customers can actually get the service installed and the project area launches, they will actually be able to place their order. So they can just have one single contact with us instead of reserving a spot and then calling back, you know, a month and a half, two months later to place an order, we will actually get their service order on the front end. And then that gives us about 45 days to start working through the drop process, either getting them placed or, you know, if there's a long drop that we need to collect some funds on, we can start that process long before the service is actually ready. And if we can alleviate sort of that bottleneck, that's one of the big things that will fix the issue. The other one is just how we're communicating with customers. Right now, if it was one of our customers that went through the reservation process, we've gotten a little bit better on it. But just people that go on the website and order or just called in to normal care, it's happening too many times where we show up on the day of their order and realize, hey, the terminal's on the other side of the street. We can't install your service today. We're gonna put in the request for the drop, but then we're gonna have to get A1 tickets to clear and get your drop placed, and we're having to delay orders. So that communication where people are taking a day off work or just staying home from other stuff, you know, trying to get in front of that process. So we're trying to set some manual processes up and some system changes where, when customers place an order, if it's not in one of the reservation lists, that our field gets notified of that within 24 hours with basically just a ticket for their drop. So we can go out and measure it. We can look and see, hey, is it one that we're gonna be able to lay a temporary cable? Or are we gonna have to get this place beforehand? If we have to get it placed beforehand, let's communicate with that customer ahead of time. I've had two customers this week that reached out to us, and I went and looked at their stuff, and I was like, wait, the terminal's on the other side of the road. So started talking to them. And if you're talking to people five days before they take a day off work, they can rearrange schedules where they're not burning a vacation day, and it makes the process so much easier and everyone's happy and not upset. They may not be thrilled they're not getting Fiber Friday, and it may be next Friday. But we're not messing with their lives, and that's the big thing. You know, back to the very beginning of the project. So when we built or when we designed our body 2020 projects, we basically released them to our engineering group as one big project, or it was a couple of projects. But they were over a certain threshold where we ended up having to bid them out just because of some of our internal bidding and procurement, that if there's a certain amount of labor on the job, we automatically have to bid it out. So we put it out the bid last summer and no one bid on it. Then by our rules, we have to put it out for bid again, and there was no qualified bidders. And then we awarded it to our in-house contractors. What we're gonna do differently for body 2021, because we have double the amount of homes, we're gonna break this up into a lot smaller projects. And that way, we don't have to go through the bidding process if we don't want to. We can just award what we need to to our in-house contractor. And that way, that by itself, we wasted about two months of a 12-month build cycle last summer. And then that just sort of snowballed where we were trying to do all eight projects simultaneously. So then we also had all eight projects launching within a month or so of each other as well, which has just created a bottleneck. So our plan is, and you know, this is bleeding into 2021, but we've set up a project management timeframe of, here's how we're gonna do, and here's the milestones we're gonna hit. You know, it's still gonna be a breathing, living document because, you know, it's hard to predict if there could be a weather event in January that pushes us back a couple of weeks. But it'll give you guys a timeline. Here's the projects we're gonna do first. And we're gonna go, and our plow crews are gonna go and place fiber. And then we're gonna have our splicing and electronics coming in behind that, and the plow crews move to the next job. And you might have some that are being constructed at the same time. But if we could alleviate that bottleneck where we're not trying to do everything simultaneously, that'll also cut down on the bottlenecks that we hit when we get to our drop installation and installation. So I think it's just, if we can get a hold of that, breaking up all these projects where they're not launching together, get ahead of our communication with customers. And then I think the last piece is, it's not been as big of a deal, but there's definitely been some challenges with addresses with making sure they're loaded correctly, making sure we capture all of them. You know, some are new construction or they've never had phone or internet service. And when you look at the aerial shot, all you see are trees. So you can't even tell there was a house there. But we're gonna do a lot more proactive stuff on the front end. Glenn Butler, he's one of our all-star employees, and he was the one that did the network planning on the front end of both of these projects. He's moved over to our engineering team, and they've basically given him responsibility to project manage all of our body fiber builds. So he's gonna be doing the audit on the front end to make sure we're capturing all the addresses. We'll work with Mike and his team on bouncing it up against the county's GIS site and just trying to get ahead of the address issues. When we run into them, it just delays customers by about 48 hours for engineers and programmers to go in and program that address. And then it takes a day or two to update on the customer service systems. But it's two days that we should be able to avoid in the next round if we get a little bit better on the front end of that. So I'll pause there and happy to take any questions, comments?
Liz, go ahead.
I do, and I apologize for this question because I'm gonna ask you to repeat, Derek. Thank you very much. I have, the short story is I have two new computers, one personal in one county, and both are having problems with Zoom, but I'm on now and it's working. In the very, and so I missed that very first section that you were talking about, the creek. I'm assuming that's Green Creek Road, or which one was that where you've got the, you had to do the boring?
It's a Pretty Creek Road.
Oh, that was Pretty Creek.
Yeah, there was one area, there was one or two creeks down around Green Creek Road that we had to do, but that's all been completed.
Okay.
But it was the same thing where we had, we had real struggles getting underneath creek because of the amount of rock, and we ended up having to set poles and go over top of them.
Okay, so, and when did Glenn take over the management?
So Glenn moved into engineering a couple of months ago, so in the middle of the construction phase for body 2020. So, you know, he didn't engineer and have control of those projects from the start. He's moved in and gotten us to where we were or where we are. If we wouldn't have, he wouldn't have moved over, I think the whole situation would have been a lot rougher. I mean, he's, he's as good as they get with understanding the network, understanding the technology. He's just, he's worked in every aspect of it, and he's been a rock star with helping us get to this point.
Thank you.
Hey, Darius, Trevor, just thanks for the update. You know, something I've talked to Mike about is just, this is a learning curve for, you know, for all of us. And it sounds like y'all are incorporating some of those lessons that you've learned through this project into 2021. So appreciate that. Look forward to seeing some of that information. And definitely would applaud you for moving Glenn into that position to help with 2021, both the, you know, kind of the front end and then the execution side. So I just appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, one of the challenging things, Mike and I had this conversation earlier, is that we need to remember, you know, if we build fiber to the home into a subdivision from the very start before there's driveways in place, you know, it's really easy for us to go and set terminals all over the place and build it that way where when most of the homes go to connect, you're pulling a piece of fiber that's 50 or 100 feet long to a house. And you can quickly do that. And it's a lot different when you try building this in an existing area, in a very rural area with long driveways, rocky terrain, low shoulders, all these type of things. There's definitely some learning curve. And when we did this first body 2020 project, remember, the definition of unserved was 10-1. So these are the hardest-to-reach areas of the counties that we've been targeting. And we could have designed it where we put fiber down both sides of every single road, but then we probably wouldn't have gotten this project funded because the pricing and stuff, DHCD would have never awarded us this money. So, you know, are there more challenges and does it create some delays on the installation? Yes, but once we get over those, I've gotten plenty of emails from happy customers. I was joking with Mike earlier. You guys see a lot of the ugly emails, but not always the happy emails afterwards. But we've gotten our fair share of those as well. And, you know, we have some room to improve, but I think we're getting there and we're moving in the right direction. The other thing that we've done in the last probably five hours is I've been serving as Mike's single point of contact for customer escalations. So I'm still gonna get copied on all those emails, but we've brought our manager of region operations, who's responsible for the state of Virginia, Trish Sapunovich, and then Roger Pierce, who's our director of operations for Virginia, Pennsylvania, and New Jersey. So Mike is gonna be sending the emails for any customer escalations from the two of them. Not that they don't trust me to handle customer situations, but if they're getting it immediately, it saves me a step of having to get it over to their team. And then it's also giving their leadership more visibility instead of me just going to their supervisors and stuff. It's allowing them to see, you know, what are the issues firsthand? And hopefully, if there's, you know, common themes that are going on, if they're not getting the support they need from other groups or something like that, it helps us to identify those quicker and just find a way to overcome them, whether it's a process change or just a resource issue or whatever. And we've done that within the last couple of hours, and they've been very responsive as they've been getting escalations today.
Derek, I speak for myself now, saying I'm continuing to be delighted to hear all the changes you guys are making as we learn lessons and apply them to the work to get things done in a better way and in a fashion that leaves the customers all feel like they got a good deal, which we really want them to feel like they got a good deal. We certainly hope fiber to the home is a good deal for everybody who gets it, so. I think that's great. Are there any other comments or questions for Derek? Yes, Donna?
Yeah, and Mr. Kelly, I also want to express my appreciation. I've seen, as you know, through Michael Culp, Mr. Culp, a number of inquiries that have come in and your company has been very responsive in getting information back to us, which we're able to then provide to our community members. So I just wanted to express my appreciation for that responsiveness. Thank you.
Can't promise we'll never drop the ball, but we at least try to respond and resolve as quickly as possible.
What we can do is hope to get better. Mike, is there more than we need to do on 2020?
Well, there is the outstanding need to make sure that the broadband authority is approval, well, approving of the plan that Derek has shared with Bucky and me. And from my perspective, it seems like we're moving in the right direction. You know, this is a partnership. I want to make sure I'm not showing, you know, any type of, this could have been better. We need to improve, and it needs to be a broadband authority decision, not a Mike Culp decision on how we move forward with 2020. There's a lot of work that Derek has been putting in in an after-action report. I know he's been doing that because I've talked to him about some of the things he's talking with his corporate. I feel relatively confident that Quantum Fiber is going to do a better job of the customer relationship. And one of my main concerns, and this is where we're going with the partnership side of this, is that I think we have a lot of ground to make up. I think there's, this was such a great idea. It worked, you know, as we got through it. And then, as we got further into it, it's almost, there's a lot of recap that needs to happen. So the community members who are involved in the next project have a lot more confidence in what's going on. So it's almost, it's not really a marketing effort that we need to put together. It's a more corrective action that the community members have more insight as well as I would proclaim that we need to have more community membership as we start 2021. So that's one of the things that I would take away. You know, Waldo, Waldo, as an example, just us working together to make sure all of the 10 projects have every single address we have contact information on. Now with the COVID pandemic sort of coming to a close, we may be able to do more in-person meetings where we get the community involved earlier so that they're well aware of what's going on with the next project. And I think there's some work that we need to do to, you know, rectify situations and talk with people who have been part of the 2020 because there's a lot of hurt feelings. You know, there's a lot, we hear from people who have taken, you know, three days off from work and all they're offered is a $100 gift card. You know, that to me is like a, I don't know, it's almost like a slap in the face if it were me and I had to take three days off. And the only thing I was, I was offered from the company that caused me to do that. I don't know. I'm just expressing ideas. I'm ready to move forward with 21. There's some work that we have to do there. So I'll leave it, I'll leave it at that and let other people talk, maybe answer, answer my concerns, but feel confident that we can go back and talk to the people at 2020 and, you know, offer more than just a $100 gift card. Let's give them some sort of apology. You know, we're apologetic that this thing didn't go as well as we had planned. Fortunate that we were able to do it. So anyway, putting that out there on the table. I'll shut up for a second or more than a second.
Mike, I'm gonna jump in here and say that, first off, I disagree with you. I think that we absolutely have a marketing issue here. We, there are some issues that, some negative feelings that have been generated, some negative, not really publicity, but news that has been generated. And the way we can overcome that is to communicate very clearly with folks what we're going to do, what they should be expecting. And this is, when I say communicate, that's not just the broadband authority, that's Quantum Fiber. And, you know, everyone in this partnership, communicate what they should expect. And then we need to follow through and make sure that they actually get what they expect. No amount of apologizing is a substitute for actually doing what you said you were gonna do. And when you fall short... Uh, and when you fall short and you're not going to make it, you tell them as, with as much notice as you can, which is, uh, if I understand it correctly, the process that Derek was outlining for us. So I, I think there is some marketing to be done in terms of communicating that, hey, we have a new plan. We've learned some lessons. This is what we're going to do. Oh, and by the way, there's, you know, there's new polo shirts that say quantum fiber on it. Those guys are okay too. Please don't shoot them, um, if they come to your house with fiber. Uh, and, and, you know, communicate once we have them, realistic timelines. Of course, everyone's going to want to know immediately, when's my house getting hooked up in, in the 2021, uh, plan? And the answer is, we don't know. It'll be, we know at some point in time, but we don't know right now. And, uh, let's not, let's make sure we don't make any promises that, uh, we aren't absolutely certain we can keep. Any other?
I'm sure if you were looking for a response on that, but I'm happy to, to weigh in a couple of things that we've been doing along those regards. So our reservation group, we, we've been providing and changing and tweaking the scripting that they use to like what to expect. So when you place an order, trying to talk to them about, hey, the, this due date, that may be a day we come and just talk about your drop, we come and measure your drop. But then on the tail end of that, what we're doing is we're pulling every order that we have coming in the pipeline and looking, what are the next couple of orders that we have for the next three to five days? Manually going through and digging those and go, okay, which ones can we capture and go, okay, we're not going to be able to meet your commitment because we know we have to bore a road or bore your neighbor's driveway or something like that. And making sure we find a way to contact them and, and push it out. And that's, um, it's something we've just been pushing here in the last, um, I think we're at about the 24 hour mark. They just tried doing it because that's, it's something, it's not excusable. I'd be ticked off if I took a day off work thinking I was going to get it and did, and we all would. Um, and that's what we've just been pressing internally is we've got to do a better job of communicating. You may disappoint a customer, but you won't piss them off, so.
I, I have a question, Mike. Um, you said that, um, ABBA needs to approve this plan. Um, what's the consequences of approving or not approving the plan?
Unmuting. Yes, it's a, it's, it's something that Bucky, Derek and I talked about two Saturdays ago. And, and thus far, from my perspective, it's an internal, you know, it's for my operations, the broadband office operations. And from, from what I've seen based on his response, it seems like it's a, it's a move forward, right? It's, yes, we need to continue. Um, there is an expectation that, you know, we're going to work through.
Let me jump in here.
Okay, thank you.
You've created an expectation that we're going to ask the board to approve something and yet we haven't provided them with any of that information. And the reason you haven't provided that, any of that information is we've, we've just seen it today. And from a timing standpoint, I'm not sure that there's any particular benefit to having the broadband authority approve this at the next meeting after they've had a chance to review it.
Yeah, I, I didn't mean to set an expectation that this was an action required on VODI 2020. So I apologize, Sharon and Supervisor Palmer. I didn't mean to propose this as an action that needs to be taken by the broadband authority in general. So agree, I, I miss, not misstated or misinterpreted or misprovided information about what has to go on with, with 2020.
Okay.
So I just, you know.
Thank you. I was just a little confused. That's what I thought I heard, but maybe.
And I, and, you know, I take the chair's comments on my prior comments that, you know, it's not, you know, it looks like I'm, I'm standing out and, and saying we're not successful in 2020. I think that we have been. So I just want to make sure that that's clarified. I didn't mean to present an issue that the chair and I disagree on something. I, I think we're in agreement. I just want to be sure that the 2021 group has a lot more attention. Uh, and that's not to say we didn't pay attention to 2020 either. But I just want to point out that with the broadband office established, I think there's going to be a lot more support from both internal, um, organizations within the county as well as within the office itself. So there's, there's going to be much more attention paid on our partnership side, meaning the county side, making sure that the 2021 customers have a, a much better experience, much improved experience than the 2020. So I, I apologize if I made it seem like we, we had some sort of action to, or the broadband authority had some sort of action to take on 2020.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, great.
I would like to, I'd like to, admittedly obvious point, but worth making that, uh, the fact that we are unhappy with, uh, some regards of CenturyLink's work. Uh, Derek, like, nobody personally blames you. You are the representative for CenturyLink. We are all doing our best here. We, we recognize that, but please understand our unhappiness with CenturyLink, uh, is not, it, it, it has to be aimed at you because you are the representative of CenturyLink, but we understand it like as a human, you're doing what you can.
I have thick skin.
Good man.
No one works for a legacy telephone company and doesn't have thick skin.
Can we move on to 2021?
Yes, Jer, I'll introduce this one as well. You know, 2021, um, we have the, the funding offered from DHCD. DHCD has been working with us on the, the first step. They have to have the broadband authority under contract. So we have the contract materials that we're going to have to execute. And then the second part of that, and they're somewhat intertwined, is we need to have what's called an agreement with our partner. In this case, it's CenturyLink, which, you know, when we go out and start talking about schedules, which Derek is going to do this evening, he's going to provide a high level overview of the schedule for 21. It's really going to be marketed as a new, uh, version of the CenturyLink company. And I think early on, and, and it might be worth repeating as part of the 2021 update, the difference between how Quantum Fiber is going to act as a company that is a fiber business only versus the CenturyLink Lumen situation that we navigated through during 2020, which was a DSL mainly copper company, uh, trying to graduate into the fiber business, whereas Quantum Fiber was built from the ground up, um, as, as a fiber company. So I'm, I'm very positive about how things are going to be improved. And with the broadband office in place and, and gaining ground, meaning we're, we're getting our footing and, and feeling much more confident about how we'll be able to participate more fully in the 21. And that's important because the, the 21 project is significantly larger than the, the 2020 project. So we really need to work efficiently and, and get things done in a expedited manner, um, if, if we can. So we, we want to do things right, do it with expeditious efforts and, uh, make sure the customers are kept in the loop. And, uh, Derek, I'll, I'll turn it over to you to go over some of the things that, that Quantum's going to do to help improve that process. And at some point during your part of this, if you could go over the high level schedule of estimated dates. So it's clear to everyone who's viewing this later or viewing it now, that whatever Derek provides is our estimated date. So over to you, Mr. Kelly. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Were you going to share your screen with that image?
I can try, yeah.
Put you on the spot.
Um, hold on a second.
So, and I'll start talking while he, he's pulling that up, but that's one of the things we talked about earlier is in, in with not having to necessarily put all these out the bid. It's not to say we won't take some of the smaller projects and, and put them out the bid. So we don't have just one company working on some of these projects. We may do a mix of, of awarding stuff to our in-house contractor and, and doing some out the bid as well, but giving ourselves that flexibility that we're not having to do that before we get started. So the network planning piece is our first step. So that's where what Glenn did in his prior life of actually just designing the, how the actual scope is going to work, that network planning piece, that's already been completed for half the projects. So half the projects have already moved over to our engineering folks. I've had them hit the brakes on it, um, just to make sure we're going to get the preauthorization letter, um, signed. So we're, we're not ordering equipment or anything like that before we have a guarantee that, you know, we've gotten all these contracts rolling in the right direction. So that, that network planning piece has been already issued for about half the projects. Um, so from there, the, the planning or the engineer team, they're going to start doing these smaller projects and try getting them kicked out. So we could see, um, the first three projects that are going to likely come out are going to be Jones Mill Road, Old Garth Heights, and then Tillman and Merryweather. So our goal is to launch at least one of those by the end of this year. Um, we tried to get conservative in our, our timeframe is to launch the first project by December 31st. Our goal is to beat that by, um, at least a couple of weeks or a month and try pulling in that other one. But we're trying to give ourselves enough wiggle room that if we start moving into holidays and weather circumstance is beyond our control, you know, we can still try hitting these dates. And then from there, we'll go to Snow Hill, Gilbert Station, uh, all in the first quarter. And then going into the second quarter, getting, um, going cross-eyed here, Gilbert Station. Um, and then we start getting into some of the really big jobs with Advanced Mill, Fray Road, Milton Hills, Box Holly Taylor's Gap, and then the newly named Campbell Cobham Stony Point. Right, Waldo?
Since the project area stopped including Campbell and Cobham, it didn't make much sense to call up that anymore.
So Mike's got the old version. We're going to make sure we get Stony Point on there somewhere for some presentation. Um, but the idea is to start having this where everyone's aware of it from the front end. So instead of us just going, hey, it's coming, it's coming, it's coming. And then we launch all of our projects over the course of about 60 days towards the end of this project. Our goal is really to space these out and that's what, what Glenn has committed to project managing through this. So we're getting these projects, smaller ones out, start getting them constructed and building customers launch. And if we can space out where, if we're activating customers between, say, the beginning of December this year and next December, that gives us much more time to space out these installs, space out the drops, where we don't run into these huge bottlenecks. And even Campbell Cobham and Box Holly Taylor's Gap, we're likely to see those broken up where we're not going to go and launch. Um, Campbell Cobham Stony Point by itself is, um, like seven or 800 homes, I think, even after it was reduced by RDOF. So, you know, that's as big as VODI 2020 by itself. So we don't want to go and launch and turn all those up in one area. So we're going to see that broken up into multiple projects and we'll launch each one as a time. To just try spacing all these out as much as possible. And if we get better on the front end, it'll make the entire process, the whole way to customer install much better because we're just, we're not going to be behind the eight ball the entire time.
Derek, will we be, uh, contracting with CenturyLink or Quantum Fiber for this project?
I, I think we use our actual company name, which is, um, Central Telephone of Virginia.
Oh, good. Centel.
Centel, old times.
That's still the, that's still our legal entity. All these other names are, are mostly DBAs.
Okay.
So, and we'll find a way to just provide regular updates using this format. If there's, you know, changes throughout the process we get on, whereas pulling stuff in or out, um, or shuffling around some, this will be a, a living document. But, um, thrilled that we've, we laid out and put out this design from the start. And thanks, Mike. If you scroll down, that's where you can actually see the dates for all the, the different projects. And, um, those numbers in column F, that's just the, the height on that chart up above. So there's nothing to pay attention to.
Well, it's exciting. Let's get these folks hooked up.
Yep. And then you could see as you get into each, you know, that, I'll send descriptions. Um, that's what we use with giving the DHCD for a project management. Where each one of the projects, we can see, you know, have we completed the OSP fiber build, which is actually placing the fiber, um, site prep and commercial power. If there's new electronics being, um, purchased, there's not going to be a whole lot of site prep because I think most of our electronics are going to go in existing real estate. Um, so they can just see and track each one of these projects, um, throughout the process. Finally put it in a font I can read.
Sorry about that.
Here's a really, really basic question for you. Um, you've got market launch, you've got, when you're talking about these dates where you're launching things, that's to launch the project or to, um, what, what does a launch mean?
Launch is where we can either, in today's world, prod, market launch is when we can start accepting orders. Moving into quantum fiber, that's where some about customers will be able to place their order 45 days before that market launch. But they won't get scheduled until we actually pull the trigger and do the market launch. And that's when we would actually start scheduling customers. So that's basically, market launch is when we're able to start installing customers. Now, if someone places their order on market launch, you know, we're not going to get them installed a day later. You know, if they hadn't talked to us beforehand, so we have no idea about their drop and it's across the street. You know, we could still run this thing, but we're going to try being far ahead of that process where, you know, we do a better job communicating with customers and seeing what drops are coming in the pipeline where we're, we're getting their order pushed out. And we don't try showing up two days after they took their order when it's just not reasonable, when we have to wait for 811 tickets to clear.
And, and so when you had the timeline where you had the launch, you were talking about market launch. Is that correct?
Correct. So for each one of those projects, that timeline, that's when we would start taking orders, um, or start installing orders potentially. Um, because we might like Fox Holly or jumping around on me. Just pick one of them, you know, hopefully we're taking orders 45 days before that as we move into quantum fiber.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? Let's plow forward then.
Uh, Bucky, I guess a question for, for you as it relates to 2021. So with the, um, the prior agenda item, the update on the 2020 cleanup plan and kind of what was just presented, will you be signing the pre-off letter, uh, while the contract work continues? Or is there something that we need to do further as a board to discuss?
The, uh, conclusion of our previous conversation, I dispatched, uh, that letter to Mike.
Gotcha. Okay. So we're rolling with that and then it's just getting a formal contract.
Yeah. Just getting a little contract.
Do not, do not mean to understate that.
I'm here for you.
Great. Thanks for clarifying that, Bucky.
Anything else? Uh, Derek, uh, one thing I wanted to clarify, um, Quantum Fiber is a, a, from the ground up fiber company. As an incidental, will Quantum Fiber offer, uh, phone services over the fiber?
We will. Um, so right now we're still doing our pots over fiber, which is, still goes through a lot of our, you know, it's plain old telephone service. It's just running over fiber. Um, you'll, you'll likely see a digital home phone offering come, um, sometime later this year when Quantum Fiber rolls out. So it'll be a voice over IP solution, but it also have what we call quality of service or service level agreements where, um, it'll basically have dedicated bandwidth setup that. So it's not like plugging in a, not the bad mouth magic jack, but plugging in a magic jack where your router doesn't know that traffic any differently than your YouTube traffic. Um, it would basically be a prioritized traffic, um, setup. So we'll likely be rolling that out sometime later this year.
Cool. Thanks. Mike, can we go on to 2022?
Thank you, everyone. If he ends up demoting me.
Thanks, Derek. Thank you so much for your time.
Yeah, thank you so much, Derek. Look forward to continuing work here in Albemarle County. Uh, 2022 is a work in progress. Um, September 14th is the primary date that we need to focus in on. That's the application due date. Uh, so we're having multiple meetings to discuss how we're going to position ourselves, meaning the broadband authority and the broadband office in general as a joint, um, or potentially a, a broadband application that comes from the broadband office coupled with one that is the broadband authority. We're yet to determine, and there will be discussion between the broadband office and the broadband authority on which approach is best. And that obviously, you know, as we're talking through, the most significant, um, potential is with the MOU that's signed between the broadband authority, CVSI, Civic Firefly, Rappahannock Electric Co-op and Dominion Power. So there's a, a significant effort that went into signing that MOU and the, the idea. And the, the idea is a regional go big, once in a generation opportunity to get something out there that provides universal coverage for Almar County and the rest of the region. So it, it seems that it's working its way forward to be a regional application. There's a lot of additional logistical work that has to go on with that. You know, things as simple as, you know, which of the participating entities, the broadband authority standing alone as the only broadband authority in the MOU. The rest of the localities are, you know, localities themselves. So, you know, significant, not a significant difference there, but it's definitely something that's being kept under consideration. And the same holds true with the Planning District Commission. It's possible that the Planning District Commission will be the, the center of the application submitting it. My question that-
Mike, have there been any meetings with the PDC folks or any of the other county members?
No. And in fact, it's, it's, it's been, you know, we're waiting to hear from, from Civic Firefly on what, what our next steps are. So good question there. There have been discussions.
We have an intent to apply date that occurs considerably before September.
That's right. Yes. July 25th. You have to-
So that's really our next drop dead date.
Right. Yeah. Your non-binding listing of all of the project areas needs to be submitted to DHCD by July 25th. So that's something that we're, we're ready to submit now. You know, it's a, we know what our 5,900 locations are due to some significant work that John Noreen has completed. Going through and identifying areas that would fit into the VODI program. So we know what, what those are. It's just at this point, you know, making sure that we're getting the right partners involved. And ironing out what's left to make sure the, the regional application is fully thought out strategically done. So I'm certain there's going to be more official meetings that there have been multiple discussions. I've talked with David Blunt about the potential role for the Planning District Commission. Right now I would, I would qualify CIVIC as the central focus, meaning they're having conversations with DHCD to figure out the best way to get this regional thing going. And we're looking forward to the, the next step on that. It's a, it's certainly a significant amount of funds that are available through the VODI 2022, almost 50 million, 49.8 million is available. So we're, we're, we're feeling very confident that we'll have a, a good chance of putting in a significant application for additional funds. I'm able to take questions about 22?
So could you just go back for just a minute and explain what, cause I didn't understand. Explain what the interaction is with the TJ PDC now? I know you just went over it to, to, and I have a dog in my lap.
That's a beautiful, beautiful dog. Yeah, the, the, the PDC has had, there's a, there's a, I would call it a fledgling group of people that have been meeting. That is just a broadband group of people that, that David Blunt has, has brought together. And they've been meeting just to exchange ideas and, and move forward with, with some of the things that we're doing on a regional basis. The, the proposal or the MOU brought forward has been looked at by that group. And, you know, one of the, one of the conversations that have come into play is in, in most cases, the larger projects that have been submitted to VODI in the past have been done through a planning district commission. So what we're doing is we're just following, in a sense, we're following what has happened in the past. So that doesn't mean that that has been an absolute determination. So there's still, that's still is, is something that's out there. My request to both the Planning District Commission and to Firefly CIVIC is to have that determination made sooner rather than later. I, I feel the longer we let that linger, the, the more likely we're going to have things that, you know, threads that we're trying to tie together. That had we done this earlier and understood who is the central participant or the applicant will be much better off. So anything that the broadband authority can do, and I think it's mainly right now, it's just me trying to encourage Firefly to make sure that they've made that decision and put that into writing. I think the, the end, the end result is I think Firefly is going to be submitting a list of tasks for each of the participating counties. So we're look, looking forward to that. The sooner that those come to us, the more likely we're going to have a more positive application. You know, if, if they wait until end of July to give us the list of tasks and expect us to have those ready, you know, by the application date. It sort of puts us into a, a bind. So I continue to, you know, point out that the, the sooner we can get this information about what we're expected to do as either a locality or a broadband authority. The more likely we're going to have a valued application, even to the point is, you know, nothing stops us from submitting it prior to September 14th. So, you know, obviously I've said this every year of VODI, this will be my sixth year. And every, every prior year, it's always been the last day. So, you know, that's sort of one of my own personal goals. And obviously, you know, this, this particular round is, is going to be significantly different. But it's still one of my personal goals to get the application in ahead of the deadline.
We're, we're just going to write on our calendars, the 13th. But with regard to the intent to apply, can we hedge our bets? And, and tell DHCD, yes, we intend to apply just for the county. And yes, we intend to apply all the same areas within the Planning District Commission. We're just not sure which one we intend to do more.
That's right. The, the, the intent to apply can be multiple submittals. That's a great question. That's, that's definitely correct. You can have multiple and, and it's, it's generally a one or two page document that DHCD will then post on their website. So that all ISPs and all community members are able to see, you know, what we're, what we're going after. None of those are, none of those intent to apply documents are binding. So, you know, just because you put them up doesn't mean that that's the, the path you're going to take. So that's the first thing. The, the one thing to, to be sure of is without an intent to apply, you do not go to the next phase of application. So you are required, you are required to submit something. You don't even have, you don't need to name the ISP. That's the other thing that's interesting about the intent to apply. You can submit the intent to apply. Your only requirement is to put in the areas that you're assuming you will be able to serve.
So let me suggest that barring some absolute certainty of what we're going to do, we'll put in this in every reasonable combination so that we can come to the dance in September regardless of how we got there.
Correct. Good point. Yeah. So again, it brings, brings, brings it all back together. I think that key major task that needs to be put into play sooner rather than later is who, who is submitting? Who will be submitting the regional app? Right? Because that same organization will have a requirement to submit their own intent to apply. If you know what I mean, it's like if it, if it is the PDC or something else, I mean, there may, Firefly may have some other idea. I'm, I'm not sure. They haven't talked to us. You know, they may come back to the broadband authority and say, hey, we, since you're the only locality with a, well, that's not true. But since you're a locality that has a functioning broadband office, we're coming to you with a request to have your broadband office, the county's broadband office be the centerpiece of the application and submitted on behalf of all the other localities.
And it's not, it, it might be good to have a conversation with the, whoever the players might be at the PDC. Because it's not just putting in an application, it's then subsequently signing a contract and managing payments and doing all the other parts that go along with this.
Yep.
To see, you know, where that would be best done. So we kind of plan for the end game at the beginning.
And can I add one more request to that? You, it would really be a good idea, I think, to ask David Blunt if other PDC groups are applying to this. Because that would tell us who we're competing against. Apparently there's a tremendous amount of money, but if there's several other of these large projects out there coming, planning to come. Then we know, you know, we have a better idea that that's really what we should be doing.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you. Good. A great idea. I'll talk to David.
Any other thoughts or questions on 2022? Great. The American Rescue Plan Act, I, I feel so positive about that. I'm, you know, I'm going to be rescued. This is going to be great. Fiscal Recovery Fund updates.
Okay, I'll, I'll move forward on that. There's open floor a little bit on this. People who are aware of what's going on with the ARP. The American Rescue Plan has two different funding availability. One is the, the local funding. So that's been called the Local Fiscal Recovery Plan, part of the ARPA. So there's the Local Fiscal Recovery Plan or Fund. So we're, we're working within the local government and Trevor can please, please chime in if I overstep my bounds or, or whatever here. But the most recent Board of Supervisors meeting, there was a great presentation about how we're going forward with an intent to utilize the funding in the most efficient way possible, you know, supporting the community. Both in broadband affordability and accessibility. So there, there will be a, a funding appropriation done for the Almar Broadband Authority from the Board of Supervisors. I don't think there's any action that's needed for the broadband authority to receive those funds. That will become funds that are available for the broadband of the authority to direct me or others on how, how we best utilize those funds. So there will be a determination on the best use of those local fiscal recovery plan funds. So that's the, that's the first thing. So I don't have a schedule for when those funds will be made available to the broadband authority. I think we'll have a lot more information about that by the July meeting, but it's certainly a significant amount of funding, approximately 3 million. So that, that's really good news for the broadband authority and puts us in a great position for certainly the, the VODI 2022 round. So that, that gives us a significant amount of match. One of the things that was, we were successful, and I meant to mention this during the 2022 discussion, we were very impactful, I think. We were active in working with DHCD to make sure there were certain things added to the guidelines. When the 2022 guidelines came out, there were certain things that were missing. That in effect, the broadband authority had a very important role and an impactful role in making some significant changes. And one of those is the ability for us to use the local fiscal recovery plan, ARPA funds. The ones that I just talked about, the 3 million as part of our match. So before it was, it was unclear whether that would be matched. They wrote into the updated guidelines that those ARPA funds are available to be used as match. The other thing that is underway, which is an approved, potentially approved, there's been some questions going on that work done prior to the VODI application date, using those same local funds can be applied as match as well. So you, in other words, you can move forward with, at risk, obviously thinking that you're going to be awarded VODI funds. You can move forward with preliminary work and then use that as part of your match. So instead of waiting until after you get the, the funds, the funds offered from DHCD, you can take steps now to kind of strategically move forward using those funds as a mechanism. They just have to be applied in an effective manner that shows they're, they're moving the ball forward on providing broadband to unserved areas. So the federal government continues to do updates on, on both of, both the local funds as well as the funds that are coming to the state. And, you know, if, if the board allows, I'd like to share my screen again. And I want to walk through a couple of things. Is, is that okay, Chair?
Oh, let's, let's have some fun with it.
Okay. Well, I'm trying. Yes, sir. Hopefully everybody will be able to see this. And I don't, it's not like totally small. So the, the first thing, and hopefully everybody sees that. Can everyone see it?
Yes.
It's pretty clear. It's fine. Okay. So the first thing, you know, the Commonwealth Connect on June 9th, which is the, you know, a combination of the governor's broadband office team and the folks at DHCD that run VODI, put together this great presentation. And they started it out with the standard, you know, this is not legal advice, you know, we have to work through our own legal teams to make sure we're doing this correctly. So it's, it's something that, you know, Richie and I'll have to work on. And we have a, a grant person who's come on, who's helping us significantly. Her name is Kim Gardner and she'll be working with us to making, making sure that we're using these funds in an effective as well as a legal manner and making sure that we're paying attention to the eligible uses. So, you know, the big thing that the Commonwealth Connect is focused, focused on obviously is the broadband infrastructure on that. So they, they did a brief little discussion about, you know, how we're responsible for managing our own tranches. Meaning the, the local funding that came down to us, the, the bulk of this presentation, I'm going to go through it really quickly and I'll, I'll send it around if people don't already have it. But the bulk of it is about the state funds. So there, there's a lot of things that are changing with this. The, the big one that we've noticed is the, the need for the network to provide 100/100. So a symmetrical service that practically is only available with a, a fiber connection. So it looks like the federal government is moving in the direction where they feel like fiber is the most reliable, most resilient and most future-proof technology. So they're encouraging people who are going to be using federal funds coming down to the states to make sure that the projects that are, that are put forward have the capability to serve 100/100. Obviously that gives the capability to go gig, gig and symmetrical. So there's, you know, that, that's the low end with the opportunity to go even faster. The next thing is they talk about whether it's middle mile or last mile. If you're pairing them with a, with a last mile, you just have to have projects that say you're delivering fiber to the home. The middle mile can be in that too. So that's, that's a pretty good thing. The other, the other very important part of this that was brought forward is this thing called ownership. You know, who ends up owning these significant networks that'll be funded by the federal government? You know, the funding that's coming through the American Rescue Plan Act, federal funded. They're looking for projects that focus on nonprofits and, and co-op. So in our particular sense, it, you know, we're, we're looking at that from, because we've had a, a great partner with CIVIC moving forward on the electric co-op side. This is a great opportunity and seems like a, a good thing that's going to happen if, when the funds are decided upon. And I'm going to get, I'll get to that. That's what everybody wants to know. When will the state know where these funds are, how these funds are being distributed to them? And what has to happen in order for them to get put into play? So this reporting thing, this is one of the things that the broadband office has put into place. The Board of Supervisors made a great decision to put the broadband office in place for primary, lots of reasons. But this, this reporting function is significant and the same is true with, with all the VODI programs. It's just the more funding that we put in place, the more there is an obligation to do effective reporting. So that in the case of an audit, we have a, we, we have all of our ducks in a row and it's an easy audit. So we're, we're definitely having to apply to that and it takes time. I'm going to skip the slide a little bit. It's just, you know, it's something about bringing in outside consultants to, to help make this possible. Fortunately, the Almar County local government has a broadband office. So you don't really need to make any of those steps, or at least I don't think we do, but it's really up to the broadband authority. And the, the Commonwealth Connect group, the VODI people consistently say, you know, you've got free consultants with us. So one of the things that we need to be aware of as a broadband authority, the broadband authority should be aware of and the broadband office should be aware of, is that the folks at DHCD are there to help. You know, this is a, a something we need to share ideas with them, meet weekly with them. I, I've proposed just really stay in touch with what's going on with, with the big bucket of funds that are being distributed to the state. So I'll skip, I said I was going to skip over there and I spent a lot of time. This is, this is one of the most exciting ones that I think we're going to have to spend some time on. And that is, you know, where, where do we put the, our part, meaning the local funds? How do we put the local fiscal recovery funds? You see it there, the LRRF, LFRF, that's a really hard one to say. it there, the L, L R, RF, L F R F, that's a really hard one to say, local fiscal recovery funds, part of the ARPA. That's our tranche, the 3 million. So we can subsidize the cost of end user equipment. And then this one's a really exciting one. We can pay for low-income household long drops and serve communities. So if we have a number of served communities already, and there's a, the potential that the broadband authority looks at some of those areas and identifies low-income households who haven't connected, but at a certain cost may be able to connect. We have a, the potential to build a very exciting program to bring those people online. So that, that's something that we need to discuss further, but it's certainly, it's not for this meeting, but it's something we could definitely move forward with. There, there is a digital literacy, meaning going out and partnering with libraries and schools and doing some, some training efforts. I think that's something we can always look at. You know, one of the things, I'm on a Yancey Advisory Committee, and I've always envisioned the community center as a place where people can come and learn how to use computer systems and get cybersecurity training, those types of things. And we've, we've made steps in that direction with our partnership with PBCC, providing them with laptops for adult learning specifically for the Yancey Community Center. So we've already had success in that area. I think there, there can be a push through use of these funds to get something out and at a low cost, to get something out there and get, get our community members more involved and more aware of what you can do positively with the internet. So good, good talk there. I'm going to fly past fixed wireless. I feel like I'm boring you guys, but I'm going to fly past there and get to, get to what's really going on and where people are watching very closely what's going to happen during the special session. So we're, we're looking forward to the special session that is called. Part of that, you know, there, I believe there needs to be communication and David Blunt and I have talked about this. He's going to start running an effort to, to make sure appropriate letters are sent to our elected officials to, you know, indicate that some of this funding should be going toward broadband infrastructure. So there, there's certainly a goal to, you know, take, take a significant amount of the 4.3 billion in state funding and move it into the, either VODI or some other type of program. So, you know, we're standing and know that we have up to 50 million available for VODI 2022. With the addition of the State Fiscal Recovery Fund, that could increase significantly. Some thoughts are, it could, it could go three times higher, up to 150, but no one knows until we, we get to the point of the end of the General Assembly Special Session. So just wanted to give you guys a quick updates of that. And I don't think there's any other big highlights in here other than our successful suggestion to VODI to change the guidelines and, and body to all of our, this, this is too complicated to say in the meeting, but originally, any ARDOF location serviceable address in body, the original guidelines would get a quarter point versus a non-ARDOF gets a, a single point. So we were 25% for our ARDOF locations in comparison. To get a higher score, you need to be more than 25% for each location. We submitted that. It should be 50% and they agreed. So, you know, that's another thing that happened during the VODI guidelines, that our ARDOF locations are going to be treated as at least a half a point for each of the, each of the locations that are ARDOF. So once again, I've said this a million times, and I know you guys are, get tired of hearing about it, but DHCD, the, the Governor's Broadband Office, they keep repeating this first bullet. We've got to think big and do this as a once in a generation investment. The tendency, and you know, I'm guilty of this 100%, I want to serve people who are in significant need. There is a, you know, expectation that the people with the least ability to pay are the most vulnerable. So they're, they're someone overlooked. So it seems like, you know, this cherry picking goes both ways. The ISPs like to cherry pick because they're going after density. I like cherry picking if it's serving a, a community that has no other way to get there. So it's kind of, you've got to look at it from both sides, but any way that we can make-
Let me rein you in. I, I think we're all on board with not cherry picking anymore.
Okay. So we're, we're good. We don't have the problem. This fourth bullet, we definitely don't have the problem. I think our, ours may be reverse. We have, you know, it's great living in the, in central Virginia and right in the middle of everything. And we basically have numerous providers who are willing to partner. So that, that is a, a great thing. The, the key is, do we have someone who's, who's ready and willing and will provide us with a great plan to get us to universal coverage? So that, that universal service or universal coverage is our goal. So one of the things that they continue to indicate is as we move forward and the broadband authority has the, the local fiscal recovery fund appropriated, we need to make sure that we're in sync with DHCD and talk to them about how we're going to be, how we're going to use it. And they're telling us that we should wait to see how the Commonwealth devotes money to broadband, meaning they want us to make sure we don't do anything significant until after the General Assembly Special Session. And so it's just clear that we've got to, you know, work together, stay in, stay in constant communication with DHCD and the brother, and the Governor's Broadband Office. And we're, we're going to be much, much better off. So I think that, that was about it. There's some more on this. I think it's, it's really, it's really exciting. You know, it definitely moves everything in the right direction. It's just getting, getting things together and making sure that we're putting in a great VODI application or two. And I'm really excited about the future. So I can take some questions and thank you for the time and I'll stop sharing.
Are there any questions for Mike? Okay.
Wow. Okay.
Move us on to the financial report. Trevor, I, I didn't see a lot of changes yet.
Will be the quickest agenda item. No change from previous report.
Thank you, sir. The new business, we've got all the same words for this one that we've had in several previous ones. Commonwealth, ARPA, State Fiscal Recovery Fund and Broadband. Is this substantially different, Mike? And if so, how? You're on mute.
Yes. That, that may have been a classic agenda mismanagement mistake.
Okay.
Yeah, it may have been shuffling-
It seemed like we've gone over that. So I just, I'll confirm.
Yep. Just a reshuffling of the, the agenda from prior meetings may have resulted in new business that is actually old business. So there you go. Thank you.
Trevor, you have some notes?
Related to the, the ARPA money, you know, Mike mentioned the board action, the $3 million, I, I do believe will be appropriated at a, at one of the upcoming board meetings. There was one, one of our board supervisor members, and I'd welcome, or, or two that are on ABBA to comment about wanting information kind of back on how the broadband authority would intend to, to spend that $3 million. And so it was a, one of the board members in, in the commenting side, everybody supported it. That is something that we, that'll be worked forward with. It's a great opportunity. But I did want to at least mention that and make sure that we, that we captured that. That might be, I mean, there is, there's a quarterly report that Mike does. Bucky, I know you had said in, in, I believe a prior meeting, you know, a concept of actually attending a, a future board meeting once we have our 2022 plan together, either presenting. But anyhow, I just, I wanted to raise that in case there is a discussion that is, that I think is still within this agenda item for, for the, for the authority.
I, I think it's a good idea to set expectations, particularly when you're talking about any kind of money and certainly that amount of money, you want to set expectations for what you're going to do with it. Any other thoughts or comments on that? Are there any other items we should bring up at this meeting?
I have one question for Richie. Since I was screwing around with, with laptops on the way in, I didn't state my name and where I'm talking from. Is there any reason to do that? Or is it mine?
I, I mean, you can fill that in right now. I, I, I think you were, my recollection is that you were present and that you, and that you answered by, by chat is what I think someone had advised. But if you want to state, you are Liz Palmer, you're here.
I, I did not say where I was calling in from.
Where are you calling in from? And I'll take care of it.
Turner Street in Blacksburg, Virginia.
Very good. Thanks for covering that.
Thanks, Liz. And Bill?
I also had a computer issue. Maybe, maybe we had the same issue.
Yes, you, you were, you went away from 505 to 509.
Yeah, my computer just decided, it had done enough work for the day. So it decided to shut down. Did, did Richie, did you bring up your, the comment you had about the 26 minutes?
I did not. One, because I didn't have that at hand and so I didn't want to be inaccurate about it. And plus, you had indicated that it wasn't, it wasn't an amendment to the minutes. It was just a comment. And I think you probably have that.
Correct. And, and I'm sorry I wasn't there for the minutes. I'm hoping they were approved. I'll go back and listen to them.
They were approved. Yeah. And I noted that you were absent for about five minutes and that you returned. And we, we maintained a quorum through that.
So, thank you. So one of the things that Richie commented on is that he wanted to add something to the minutes. And my comment was, it wasn't said, so we can't add it, but I can bring it up at this meeting and it can be part of the minutes of this meeting. And that is in the discussions about spending funds, he wanted to add that although ABBA does not have grant authority, the EDA does, if consistent with economic development and the Board of Supervisors can donate to the charitable organization and direct funds to the EDA for designated purposes. So I will add that to these minutes and reflect that they were, in, in addition to an elaboration on comments made April 26th.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Richie.
And one more, I'm not sure if anybody said this or not. I was going to say it on the April minutes. It was a little confusing on how the MOU, what the MOU actually did. So I was going to suggest that-
I provided some updates to that.
Gotcha.
Yes.
Any other comments? I take a motion to adjourn most kindly. Liz gets credit for so moving by waving her hand. And there's a second from, from Mr. Henry. All those in favor, say aye. Thank you very much. Thank you all very much for your time this evening.
All right. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Be safe.
Have some champagne.
Yes, enjoy. Well, though, it kind of begs the question, this guy's the head of the G-